It's so shallow, how could it be cold?
We'll try to.
You don't have to worry about how cold the water is.
You got water.
Well, it's only about two feet.
Swim in Lake Michigan and swim three different.
You don't have to worry about it.
The river's flowing down there. It was cold.
It's right there in front of the center. And it's really mucky out there.
And that should help. Did they see lights? Should drive her away.
I don't know if we've got the muck in there, but it looks like you see light coming.
It's so shallow.
No, the bottom is clear.
We'll call the meetings are ordered. If you would all stand for what you mean.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
And Laura, do you do a roll call for us?
Noah?
Here.
Renee?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Gerald?
Here.
Lori, yes, Jeffrey?
Here. And if we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
And a second? Any discussion? Here and done, roll call vote.
Noah?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes, Jeffrey?
Yes. Next, we have public comments. And our first public comment, it's been going well so far, but on an agenda item, we'll limit it to three minutes. If you want to make non-agenda item comments, you can all skip them at the end. Did you have a question?
No.
Oh, okay. You were saying you wanted to do public comments?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. Yeah, if you want to come on up, say your name. Start the panel.
My name is Karen Fowler. I live at 2769 Middle Lake Road. From Lake, I see that we have a resignation of a treasurer and an appointment of a treasurer. And in light of the fact that this board came on very inexperienced and sometimes gives the impression that they're almost sorry that they did this, I would hope that whoever you appoint to become the new treasurer, that you make sure that this person has a lot of experience with what the needs will be. I just feel that, you know, there has been a lack of experience here. Not that they're not, not that you're not trying, but it's just that I think that, you know, things could have been better. But anyway, I just hope that when you, and the public has nothing to say with this, with this appointment, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I just hope you're very careful. Thank you.
Good?
No.
Other public comment?
I just have a few questions. When the resignation was submitted, there was like a packet of a veteran's discrimination, violation of rights. Was the treasurer's rights violated, discriminated against? I mean, what is the purpose of putting that in to the resignation letter?
No, Gerald just requested that the board get that information. And it didn't have his personal information and anything like that, but just informational items. So I just decided to include them in the packet.
Okay. I just don't know if that meant that he felt that his rights were violated or he was discriminated against. I just wondered, you know, if that was more determined something that was going to progress on the road. And also with the appointment of the new treasurer. I'm just gonna be honest, I think we do need somebody that is experienced and knows what they're doing and knows what reports need to be reconciled, what's wrong with what is currently in the books. Because I did look at the audit and there was problems as far as reconciliation of certain accounts and things not being done right and stuff not even being done. And I don't think somebody who doesn't have any experience whatsoever, when it comes to being a treasurer and knowing exactly the reports that you have to do, when you have to do them, how you have to do them, isn't going to be able to fix the problems that are currently there right now that when the new person comes in, they're gonna have to have the knowledge to know exactly what is wrong and why it's wrong and how to fix it and how to correct it. And I don't believe that the person that you're going to appoint has that experience. I truly don't believe that. Being a treasurer is a tough job. I wouldn't do it, I wouldn't even try to do it because there's so many things that you gotta do. Do I gotta shut up now?
If you have another second?
I have other things to say. I'm just saying that, you know, I just think that that's not the best choice for us right now. I just totally think that's not it. Because there's things that need to be fixed. Because we're in a pickle right now because things are not done. And, you know, just hearing, you know, gossip is gossip. You know, things haven't been paid to other municipal, what municipal, I can't say the word.
Municipalities?
Yes, thank you. That we're supposed to be, as far as taxes go. Like we collect taxes and those have to be dispersed. You know, I've just heard through other people that that hasn't been done or it hasn't been done correctly, that kind of stuff. And that could just be rumored. But I just think we need somebody that is gonna come in and they know what they're doing and they need to fix the stuff that's broken or wrong and reconcile everything to get our books back to where they need to be. And I also, it's really complicated.
That's the, that's the.
You can have my time. Got three minutes, start it over.
And I, you know, I read in the thing that, you know, you're nominating this person because, you know, you've already interviewed her, she's already been hired. But she was hired as an administrative assistant. She was not hired to be a treasurer. You know, and maybe, you know, yeah, she took on the job of deputy treasurer, but for two weeks you cannot learn. And the person who was training her really was kind of still learning himself. So that is not a good appointment to do. And I don't know if there's other possibilities that can be done to get our books straight. And in the meantime, look for somebody who's qualified to come in and do the treasurer's job and to fix the things that are wrong. And I, I'm not quite sure how that works because it's all complicated laws, this and that. But what I think, you're just looking to fill a seat with a warm body. And we had a warm body in there before who was trying to learn, but it's overwhelming. And I don't think we need another warm body because who's gonna train this person? If there's no deputy treasurer, who's gonna train her? That's what I'd like to know. No answer?
Oh, okay.
I mean, who's, if she's, if she's appointed, who's gonna train her?
Be excited and learn now. We'll discuss it more when we get to these as.
But we don't have time, do we? Because, I mean, there's certain things that have been done now. Or should have been done like months ago.
I'll take my three minutes. I can answer some other questions.
Yeah, you can. So, I mean, basically, you guys disagree with the way townships work, which I do too.
Well, I'm not disagreeing how it works, but I'm just disagreeing with this decision that's being made for this certain chance. That's what I'm disagreeing with. Because I truly think right now we need somebody who knows how to do reports, knows how to reconcile bank statements, knows how to do things that correlate with the clerk and this and that and that and this. I totally think we need somebody with the knowledge to do that. I'm not saying this person's a bad person, but, you know, we hired, you hired her to be the administrative assistant. And I did watch the interview process. And what I got from the interview process is that she was even the least qualified to be the administrative assistant out of the other two that applied. So to me, that's just saying, why, why are we also gonna bump her into the treasurer? Because that's just gonna screw stuff up more. We've already been audited and problems have been found. And if we put somebody else in there with no experience, it's gonna compound our situation, which is not good. That's just my opinion on it. I'm not saying that I don't like challenging rules and laws, but I'm just saying this decision that's being made.
You disagree with it?
I disagree with it, yes. And that's the reason that I.
I appreciate the comment.
But that's just what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ma'am Smith.
Ma'am Smith.
276345.
Perfect. Other public comment?
I have. Kim Plummer, most of you know me as deputy clerk. I would just like to remind you that during the election, we don't get to pick the experience of who takes the positions. Unfortunately, yes, people are put into those positions with all the experience. I'd also like to point out that our audit was better this year than it was two years ago. So if we look at that overall, we've made great steps. So to say we shouldn't put someone of lack of experience into that position, looking over, I was on the hiring process, her experience coming in was greater than what the other people, I felt, hands on hands, either you worked with. By Linus, that's what they work with. So I feel that she is a good choice. And I feel that she has more knowledge coming into this, if she wants to do this position. She has more knowledge coming in than what Tammy did, the treasurer before her, than what Gerald did. I feel she is highly qualified.
Richard M., 2525 East Wakefield Drive. I have no idea who the person is that's being nominated for the position that's about to make. But I think it's more toward the board. If we have audit problems, it's real easy during every meeting to say, I make a motion to accept this, and somebody else say, I suck at it. It's more than just saying that. It's actually looking at the board. And so it's not just the treasurer, it's the board that gets involved here too. So we might pick a good person tonight, I don't know. But I think we need to look at ourselves and see what we're approving at every meeting. So, thank you.
Other public comment? You can public comment at the end, begin if you'd like.
Thank you.
And then we can go long, get crazy. I don't, I'll stay until 10 if you want. I know I don't stick to the board here, the board would hate it, but. Any other public comment? All right. Here and done, we will move on to the first item on the agenda, which is the treasurer's resignation. So included in here is the letter that I received and that's in the board packet. In this suggested motion, I would like to make the note that as part of the legal process that is filed with the clerk and that has properly been done, we'll turn it in to the board. So it's filed with the clerk, but as part of the motion, that should be mentioned in there. And I did not write it in there like that. Do we have any motion?
I make a motion to accept the resignation of Gerald Flatter as treasurer as filed with the clerk effective October 5th, 2021.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. And do we have any discussion? All right. And both these are, they're a little unusual because you have someone sitting on the board that because both the decisions involve him, he will naturally, he would abstain. I would, I would still like his name to be called so that you can officially put that in as your votes in these cases, just so it's on record. I think that would be more proper. So roll call vote.
Lori, yes. Noah?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the treasurer appointment. And so this is what we heard the public comment. I included a decently long piece about this. And so the way municipalities are structured are different at different levels. Villages and cities, to a large extent, they hire a treasurer and a clerk because those are administrative functions and they're the lieutenant in the political side. In the case of townships, the treasurer and the clerk also sit on the board, so they do the political voting, but they also do the function of those offices. And so the township can't function without having a treasurer because we can't pay bills or issue paychecks, those types of things. So not everyone, for any period of time, would obviously be a decent disaster. It can, it's technically possible. If you go, I believe it is 45 days without a treasurer, then the county is supposed to file for running the election essentially immediately. Somewhere in that time period, the governor would probably put someone into the position and that type of stuff. And then eventually you would have an election, but it'd be, it'd be locked. So especially if our maintenance and fire staff didn't get paid, that type of thing. I'm guessing that would not go over well. And so as, as part of that, with having a fairly short timeframe is why we're looking at moving forward with this. Kelly's obviously gotten access to the bank accounts and been working on learning that. We did have a split decision on the board for hiring her as deputy treasurer, but that wasn't exactly against her. We had over 70 applicants, we reduced it down, so we had a, we had a large pool and a qualified pool. The most, the most qualified person as far as accounting goes actually ended up pulling out for another position that she had an opportunity for advancement in. And so there were some people, three, that decided that someone else that was in that pool might work better in the administrative position. But over that period of time, she's now had the training and experience that she's got, which puts her ahead of the pack on this, at this point anyways. So that's essentially where I am on this. And, and then the deputy part is longer because you have 45 days to appoint once she takes over. So, but I will allow board discussion before this, if we want, before we make a motion. Because I know it's, you know, it's a big decision.
I think one of the things I'd like to comment on is for Gerald to recognize his need to step down. That's a very big, brave step for any human to admit in his situation. And we as human beings, we need to be compassionate to those who have served in our military forces. There are issues, underlying issues that none of us knew or there, but they're there nonetheless. And so we do need to move forward. You know, I feel Kelly is very qualified for the situation. And the idea of allowing our governor of all people to try to appoint somebody for our township, thank you, but no thank you. And it's like, to have the fire department, to have people that get a paycheck to have to go without pay because we have to wait it out for maybe somebody more qualified to hop into our doorstep? I just, I'm like, I'm grateful that she's here. I'm grateful that, that he's a phone call away if she needs it. And this is life and we take it. Life is a risk every day and we take it.
And this ends up triggering an election next year, the midterm election. So it used to not be like that, the laws were a little different. You would appoint and then the person would serve out the rest of the term. And in this case, if it's so long before the midterm election, so halfway through a four-year term, it ends up triggering that election occurring in the midterm election. So, which is the case in this situation.
Next question.
Yeah.
I don't know if this is appropriate to you. So when Kelly steps into this position, that obviously leaves open the administrative assistant position. So are we starting that process over again? Or are we going to go back to the original, the other two people to see if they're still interested in that position? I'm just wondering if that's been discussed.
I think that's reasonable, just very likely discussed because this is obviously the priority on the thing to handle. So, and that's the, that's actually another point to make that when you don't have a treasurer, a deputy treasurer, because appointed by the treasurer, that position doesn't exist. So it's not like there's a backup for when that leaves. It's only backup in certain circumstances so that it doesn't work, just have it fill in. But yeah, I think it would be reasonable to bring back those, the other candidates that we had to look at for the position because we just went through the long process and we had good candidates.
Yeah.
It hasn't been too long, so.
Exactly.
Yeah. With that, and we have, we have 45 days to handle that basically, after the sixth. Starting on the sixth, we have 45 days. Good? Anything else? Any questions for Kelly? I know she was really looking forward to public speaking, I'm joking.
You know, I really, just for the public and for the board, you need to understand that anybody that's put into that position, anybody that's in the office now, me, I'm gonna make sure she does the job. Because the treasurer's job feeds into my job. So if the treasurer doesn't do their job right, then it affects my job and I'm very, very passionate about my job being done right. So I truly believe that Kelly, true she isn't experienced, but I believe that she has the capability, just watching her in the two weeks that she's been here, she has the capability to learn. And there are tons of education that's out there for her. She also has touched base with the county, other county treasurers, other township treasurers. So they're a great resource for her. And I don't think that she will hesitate if she needs help. So I, to try to alleviate everybody's concerns, we wouldn't put somebody in here that absolutely could not, we didn't feel, could do the job. Granted, she's probably not gonna be perfect at first, but somebody that's coming in with no experience, that's gonna, that's just the way it is. To not have a treasurer is absolutely devastating for this township because it stops everything. We can do nothing. We can pay no bills, we can, we can't pay our people, we can't get our tax roll done. We have winter taxes coming up. I mean, it puts us in line for being in trouble with the state of Michigan for not getting our tax roll done. So I, I know, I know a lot of people are concerned, but I think that, I, I will tell you, I'm gonna make sure that she gets the job done right. Because her job feeds into my job. And I don't like people to say my job's not done right. And an answer to the audit, yes, we did have a problem with the audit. With one account, the tax account. And I already, no, no, one account.
No, but I mean, for three years, it's always the tax account.
It's the tax account. And I've been working, and I have already been, I've already been in touch. The state of Michigan has already contacted me.
But it's already been, and there was also the reconciliation of bank statements.
That's the tax account.
Yeah, there are suggestions for that. You can raise at the end.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm not doing it for weight. No, it's okay. It really is, and it's true.
Yeah. No, I completely get it, but.
And it is the tax account. It is the tax account. And I've already been in contact with the state of Michigan because I have to do a corrective action with the state of Michigan.
Yes, I've seen that, yes, yes, I've seen all that.
And I'm actually gonna work with the auditor because we, we know what, I have a feeling we know where the problem is and we can fix it. But unfortunately, last year was not a very good year because we added a lot of changes. And this year is, is very, is very traumatic in this, in the township because everybody changed but me. And so we're, we're working to the problem.
When you get into self-selection bias, which I wouldn't mind giving the seminar on self-selection bias if anyone would come to it. But what we, what you get into is what we see in the election. Like we could go and talk to all of the accountants that ran for the position in the last election, which is none. And so you have to live inside the township, about 10,000 people. And then you have to want to do a treasurer's position for the amount of money. Wow.
Your time's up.
We need to replace the audiovisual system as well. But you need someone that wants to do that position for the money and benefits that it offers, that lives inside the township, that also wants to be in a political position, which I doubt that person exists. So CPA, I mean, I know some CPAs, a CPA would never take this position. It's, it's not going to happen. They would have to take a huge pay cut and, and have this horrible position that's in the public and which they don't, they don't generally want, at least the personalities I know and I feel. So. Any other board comments? We'll fix the audiovisual system a little.
With the camera.
It might be if you look in the camera, but sure. Any other comment? Otherwise, we're looking for a motion.
I will make a motion to appoint Kelly, yes, there is, I'm sorry, Ms. Waterman, as Dalton Township Treasurer effective October 6th, 2021.
I'll second that.
Motion second. Any other discussion on the board? Here and done, roll call votes.
Noah?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Lee? Lori? Yes, I'm sorry, Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we do another board comment. And so the first comment went a little long. It's my tendency to be lax and let people speak as much as they want, which is a bad habit as a politician, running a meeting. Nevertheless, the second comment, we have public and board comments. You're free to, free to come up and we can get into a little bit more of exchanges of whatever anyone would like to talk about.
Good evening, Alstal. 1650 Israeli Township, Dalton Township Treasurer. First off, Gerald, thank you for your support, your continued support for the organization and for the township. I do know it's a tough burden to handle. I can explain that very generally. It's the most senior employee of the township. And now I'm my fourth treasurer, my fourth supervisor, my third treasurer, or my third clerk. And I was trying to count back there, I can't even get the number right. I think my 11th set trust me. When every one of you have come in here, unfortunately, and it is a political elected position, I am not a politician, I've never had been. But I will tell you, unless you've sat through these meetings for the last 11 years like I have, it is very hard for anyone to judge what your jobs are. Do I agree with 200%? No. Will I continue to agree with 200%? No. That's what we do, what's called communication. But no one has to run for anything, any credentials. I had to have more credentials than anyone in this township to run for a township official position. I've always been open and willing to help any employee and help any of you with your job. And I will continue to do that. And Gerald, thank you for what you've done. I know it's a hard decision. Believe me, every four years, I wonder if I'm still gonna have a job. And I will continue to support this board, I'll continue to support this community. Your choice is your choice. My advice I've always given you, Gerald, do you. Thank you. Thanks.
Good. Any other comment?
I didn't come here to judge and berate anybody. I came here to just speak my opinion, to ask questions and to be accused of trying to be judgmental or berate anybody. I'm not.
No, I wouldn't say you, you weren't berating, but you can now. You're, you're free to, you owe my permission.
Somebody could say that. But what, I just have concerns, you know? And as a public citizen, you know, I don't know all the laws. I don't know all the stuff. And it's like, I have concerns. And it's like, you stand up here to express your concerns and then you're shot down like, you're trying to be ju, you know, I'm not judging anybody here at all. But I have questions and I wanted answers and that's all I wanted. I didn't want somebody to come up here and, and try to defend their job and what they do. I wasn't looking for that. I was just asking questions about the new person coming in. I wasn't judging anybody else's jobs or anything that they do. That's all I wanted to do. And since we're, you know, I had questions. It's like, you know, from the stuff that I've been told and from the stuff that I've read, people who file bankruptcy cannot be bonded. If they are bonded, they're considered high risk. And so that was one of my major concerns. Because I know that the person that you're appointing has just filed bankruptcy last year. So that was my biggest concern because I'm thinking, if somebody's filed bankruptcy, are they good at money management? And this is a citizen. That's my concern. Because right now our money management has some issues that need to be fixed. And that was a true concern. I wasn't trying to berate anybody because that's not a criminal act. Shit happens in your life. And things, you have to do things that maybe sometimes you wouldn't want to do. But as a citizen, for somebody who's gonna be controlling our books and doing, I have that question. If she could be bonded, if she was gonna be capable of being able to manage money because I don't know this person personally, I don't know anything about her. And then number two, when I was watching the interview process, you guys were talking about age. Somebody said, oh, well, this person's too young, no, maybe we shouldn't do that. And then somebody else said, well, this person's too old. Well, I just want to tell you, there's age discrimination. When you start saying stuff about not hiring somebody because they're too old, that's age discrimination. And I'm just gonna tell you that one of the people that, as far as I know and I've been told, that interviewed. told, that interviewed, has already filed a civil suit against one other business for sex discrimination. So this person is not gonna be afraid to turn around and sue this township for age discrimination. So, you know, it's just things like that. It's like, people, I'm not judging anybody, but the money that comes into this township is the taxpayer's money. That's what I'm concerned about. I couldn't care less about what people do with their lives. I couldn't care less what they, who they sue and what they do. But when it comes to people that are gonna manage our money, yes, I have concerns. I personally did not have anything against Gerald at all. Nothing at all. But I just knew that he didn't have the experience. And I know it's a stressful job, and I know he wanted to do it, but it's, it's a hard job. I wasn't judging him as a person. I wasn't judging his ability to do anything in life. I was, as a citizen of this township, trying to stand up and ask questions to try to find out who is managing our money and if we're gonna be okay. And today coming here, I already knew that this person was gonna be appointed, but I still chose to come here and speak my mind. Because I know there's other people in this township that I've talked to that feel the same way. And I guess I'm the only one who has the guts to come here and stand up and say it. And I want to tell you that, yeah, it sucks that you come up here and you speak your minds and then you get like, looked at like you're, you're trying to just, you know, tear down the township commissioners and you're trying to do this and do that. I'm not. I'm just asking questions about if our money is gonna be okay, and if we are gonna work out these situations that are broken right now and can be fixed. And my concern was that if a new person comes in, who's gonna train her? Lori can't train her because there's checks and balances, and that would be conflict. So I'm like, we don't have a deputy, you know, we don't have a deputy, we don't have Jessica, I'll just say that. We don't have Jessica to train the new person that's coming in. So that was my concerns. And I come here and I don't get any answer, well, we have to talk about that. It's like, yeah, but we got winter taxes coming up or all this other stuff. Do we have time? I'm not saying she's not a quick learner, I'm not saying she's stupid, I'm not saying any of that stuff. But I'm just asking somebody who's gonna be managing our money, what this person is gonna be able to do and if she's the person that needs to be able to do it. And I just didn't want another warm body put in there to pay payroll and pay bills just to get us by. I didn't want that. That's why I was here. And that's all I got to say.
Yeah, yeah, that's all good. I mean, so on the judgment thing, I want to make a small note, I think it's super important to judge people. Right? Really bad people we don't wanna judge and not judge, and really good people we don't wanna not judge. So it's not, we say it to try to be nice to each other. But, but, and then, so on that, yeah, I mean, it's, it's super important, right? We don't wanna say like, I don't judge Stalin, I don't judge Stalin in a very severe manner. So it's.
There's no Stalin up here. I'm not judging anybody.
Yes, it's in the past.
Jesus. I'm not trying to judge anybody, why, why?
Well, and then, and then you're bad because I don't, you know, I don't, that you think that we think your judgment, that's not it.
Because somebody said I was berating, and then Kim gets up there and looks at you like, well, you've done better than any other you. That's not what I was trying to say, I'm worried about right now.
I agree, and we're not trying to negate that either. And, and, and I'm listening to what you're saying and I know what your concerns are.
I appreciate your passion. I appreciate, I appreciate what you did.
But somebody says, see, and I'm gonna ask questions, should we appreciate it? That's how, that's how stuff starts in township, that's how corruption starts.
Exactly, because nobody questions.
Because nobody questions.
Well, there are viable problems, right? So when we see this law, it's, you, you can point out the problem, pointing out the solution is, is much more difficult. So just like this, if we, so if there was a CPA that was like, I would love to step into this role. But this is an example, right? So if we had a CPA that was like, I would love to step into this role, that would be, that would be the obvious choice, I don't think, right, that'd be fine. But that, as a solution, is not, is not available, it's not feasible or viable at this point. So, well, you're right about the people's business, there's actually a great book by Andrew Mellon, he's the secretary of the treasury from the 1920s. I know Parnell's looking forward to this.
I love history reports.
Yeah, yeah, I know. So I value history. And if you, if you don't value history, then that is very unfortunate as a, as a human being, I would say. But Andrew Mellon wrote this great book, he's the secretary of the treasury in the 1920s, and it's called Taxation, it's on taxation, but the subtitle is The People's Business. And it's, it's super good, I believe the first 15 pages of chapter one are just amazing. From those, you can indicate to a large extent where our country has gone quite wrong. So, yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a good book, yeah. Sounds like Parnell's read it.
Yep.
All right?
I want, I would like to add a little something here. You did make the comment that the board acts like they don't wanna be here.
I did not say that. I did not say that.
I did. Sometimes I get the impression that's very true.
But I don't know why you would have that impression. I actually do, I'm a part of my community and knowing that, you know, I'm sitting up here and I'm trying to, I have to go through all of this paperwork at home on my own time, you know, and really look, decipher it and, and look into things, you know, I, that's a great opportunity to serve my community. It's a four-year thing. Who knows if I'm gonna go the next time around? I don't know that, I don't have that answer. But I know that I wanna give this my all. I feel, I am a Christian, and I really believe that God is the one that's placed me in my position. I never put my name out there, not once, nowhere. Because I'm like, God, I don't want this. If you don't want me here, I even got a $650 fine because I forgot to check a box right, okay? And I'm like, I'm not paying that, God, I will not pay one penny of that. If you want me there, God, you will pay it. And you know what? He did. He rolls up all the people to pay my fine. That's why I'm here. Because I'm passionate about the kingdom of light and not the kingdom of darkness. And I want to make this place a better place for humanity all the way around. And we have to give people chances, you know, I mean, man, if you saw where I came from, oh, oh, y'all would judge me like nobody's business. But you know what? I don't care, I don't care, because I know where I'm at today. I know where I'm at now, and I've overcome things. But to sit here and think that I'm, I'm a house cleaner, I've got a daughter with multiple disabilities, I'm her full-time caregiver, I became a certified colon hydropath therapist, man, I can tell you all about your digestion track. Would you know that? Would you even, you know, I'm just saying, I'm here because I'm passionate about my community, I love the people in my community. It's pretty simple. That's what I'm here for. And I don't know anybody sitting up here personally that don't wanna be a part of this, not one of us. We saw an injustice take place a few years back.
Maybe I was given the wrong impression.
Possibly so.
Yeah, go ahead.
I would like to comment because, Robin Lindsay, 2795, Millbrook. And I understand maybe no one that you don't, but I have personally heard several people on this board claim, I only got this much time left to go, because I had no, no intention on staying around. I've heard, oh, we, we had no, we had no idea, we never spent a dime, knocked on the door, we didn't plan on getting voted in. I, I, it was like, I don't even know why, why would you run if your plan wasn't to get voted in?
Make a difference.
Well, Renee, you're one of them, not a set of them. And anyway.
News or less.
No, I'm just saying that people have been given the impression that none of you wanted this position, you didn't plan on getting voted in, so you didn't prepare for it. So I'm just saying, you know, and I know for a fact that, I, I understand exactly what you're saying because we are the citizens, we voted too. And we all, everybody had a vote. And, you know, we're here, coming to the meetings, paying attention to what's going on, but by God, if you say anything and somebody up here don't like, you get berated, you do. You get slammed on Facebook, we got trustees that go on Facebook all the time and attack people. I'm like, what the world? What is that about? I don't get it. But I, I have never, all the years we've been coming, like, like you said, we've been through several supervisors, several board members, I've never seen people act like that and treat people like that, ever. We, we do have the right to ask questions that we don't know what the answer is to.
Absolutely.
And without being, you know, treated like we're attacking you.
Right.
I mean, we're just asking questions that we don't know the answer to. And that's the same reason why we're here tonight. Because, you know, we know Kelly was and hasn't been here long, and it's like, I watched the interviews too. And I, you know, who's gonna take this over? We didn't know what the legalities of that were, we didn't know what that looked like if, if she could be put into that situation, and that's fine. You guys are all comfortable, whether you're the ones who got the answer for it. But it was just coming here to find out what was gonna happen, what was the process, what to expect, you know? And I was also wondering why, you know, along with Gerald's resignation, why, you know, the ADA stuff was put in there from the veterans? Because I was like, you know.
Just had to be reasoned.
Yeah, what was the reason that that was put in there? Because he's an elected official and I didn't really think the township was necessarily an employer. I, I mean, I don't know how that's looked at, that was gonna be one of my questions, but God, after, you know, heaven forbid we ask a question. But, you know, I was just concerned as to why, you know, anybody would, you know, put themselves in this situation if you're having issues or you, you know, and you guys all know you didn't have no experience, and everybody else knew that too. And I think everybody's tried to play along and let, you know, I don't, I don't think that you've done a horrible job, but God, if I had a, you know, if I have a question and I shouldn't be treated like, you know, I'm just, you know, being disrespectful or pointing a finger, I'm not pointing a finger, I'm just asking a question too. So, but like I said, you know, if you guys ever wanna get it together, you know, the trustees need to stay off the Facebook.
No.
So, you know, you can't attack the people who pay your, you know.
I'm not making on the Facebook, but there's too much night.
Either way.
It's personal choices.
I'm there.
You're lying there.
But, you know, you can't, you can't be going after all your people, it's just really tacky and unprofessional. And people do have questions and they have the right to know. We, we vote, people, we vote, we pay our taxes, and we have a right to know what's going on.
Have your question.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Richard, I'll be real quick. I'm retired, I'm here. Gerald, thanks for serving while you were here, okay? Appreciate it. Kelly, don't even know who you are, but welcome aboard, we're counting on you.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not on Facebook anymore, okay? Or anyplace. But I think anything dealing with township business or talking about people in the township shouldn't be out on some social media stuff, anything, okay? It should be at the meetings here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, good. Any other public comments?
I think I want to add a little something on Gerald's behalf, I won't mind me saying this for you, Gerald, but part of his reason for him backing down was, he's served in the military, he's suffered some types of trauma. He didn't understand and taken the position that it would be as stressful as it is. And so he put that out there in lieu to open eyes to what veterans can sometimes experience and go through. And I just think that instead of questioning him so hard on it, it's more compassion on the situation, this is just something we fell into. We're here and we can't walk away from it. What if, God forbid, he got slammed by a truck and he was dead instantaneously? Wow, what kind of situation would we be in then? So you can't, you can't just, you know, what if, what if, what if? This is what it is, and we need to move forward, period. That's, and this, and we're doing the best that we can. And I pray that she has to understand.
Trying.
Trying.
I understand. And there's other people that have PTSD that didn't serve in the forces. There's other people who had childhoods that were absolutely.
I'm there, honey.
Me too.
Okay.
But if I resigned from my job, I would put a little pamphlet in there about.
That's your personal choice.
What I'm just trying to say, as a citizen, when that's put in there, because people sue nowadays, when that's put in there, that, my first thought was, is he claiming that he was discriminated against?
So he gave me that information because he wanted the, the board to have it. It was my choice to put it into the packet because.
Well, it confused, I think, a few people.
Right.
Totally confused a few people because it made me start to think, well, is, was there harassment or was there, is rights violated? And are we gonna have to look to be, you know, the township being sued someday for harassment or violations of veterans' rights and stuff? Because it went on and on and on.
Some of the feedback I've gotten is that I put out too much information.
Yes, and that's just what I'm trying to say right now. I never said anything about Gerald at all, not, yes, he served, I understand that, I know he has PTSD, but you know what? Other people do too. And it's not just because, from combat, because you know, there's other people that have, have childhoods that were like combat, maybe in a different situation.
And every human is different.
I know, I understand that, but you're trying to say that we are attacking him, I'm not attacking him.
Or not.
I didn't really say.
I'm not attacking Gerald as a person, I'm not attacking Gerald whatsoever.
You're asking why.
And you're right here at the boss to stand up and say, I can't do this anymore. And I respect that, and I want you to know that. And I'm so sick of being seen, we need to give you compassion. I never said I wasn't giving you compassion. But when it comes to finances and this and that and things not being done, yes, we're gonna be passionate about that too, because that affects our lives too.
First off, right now, I'm gonna tell you, you need to calm down, because you are triggering me.
You wanna, but I'm sorry if I'm triggering you. You're the one that was at the recent board meeting not too long ago, explaining the F-word and how you weren't gonna pay their, you weren't gonna pay their taxes that, don't touch it, board.
I did not tell them that.
Yes, you did.
All right, so that's, that's a, that's a different meaning, so.
I'm triggering his PTSD.
I know.
Oh, wow.
That's the other thing is that, that's the case.
I think it's the first I wait till and storm out, so that's, you know, maybe more. But, yeah, we might need more later. But I can add a couple of these things, so not wanting to off, it's obviously I can't, I can't address not putting forth effort because over the last couple of years, I wrote an article series and spent thousands of dollars and been on the radio and newspapers and that type of thing. But I have commented that I don't want to run again. And so I'll, I'll address that, I've been advised against it politically, if you have political ambitions, you obviously wouldn't say that. And I consider it a moral duty, a civic duty, to take the position and to do it well with a long-term vision. I, I think that gets confused, is that if you don't wanna be a career politician, maybe of a short-term vision over what is good for the township, which I think is completely wrong, I've been trying to do things that would work out good over the long term. And as far as I can tell, other people that have previously had political ambitions have taken the short-term view on a lot of things. And so, and I, I disagree with those, I think the long-term view should be taken if you want things to work out well. And what I don't plan on running for the position again, I don't want my life to be township supervisor politician. I don't consider it a super enjoyable job, I've been teaching the last handful of years, and that's much more enjoyable and I like writing more. So I consider serving my time, doing, doing my term, I can do a lot in politics maybe in some other way, but not in a 50, 60-hour-a-week job, whatever this happens to be. And then, and then posting on Facebook, I mostly see it as an outlet, so I did start to run a Facebook group, and that was specifically designed for people to get on there and debate things as a citizen before I was in office. It hasn't exactly worked out that way, it's not like good discussions can usually occur Uh, it hasn't exactly worked out that way. It's not like good discussions can usually occur on social media. And it's probably been detrimental to the mental health of society in general and especially the country and especially young individuals in the country. Uh, but it's still a useful, although I really got shut down today, um, still a useful outlet for getting information out there, shooting little videos, writing little things. I, I was trying to post today. The reason I found out Facebook was down today is because I was trying to post about some road construction, uh, that was happening that I got an email on from the county. And so, that's, that's not out there very well because it didn't get posted anywhere very useful. But, so, those are my, those are my aspects on those. Good. Any other public comments, board comments?
I just wanna say that I, I feel bad that any of the residents would feel that if they ask a question that they, and the question maybe interpreted as not being liked by the board, that you're being attacked. That's not, that's not the way it should be. You should be able to ask a question. We are your employees. That's what you, what is an office to do, to work for you. And I feel bad that Rhonda left. Um, I, I did not take anything she said as judgmental, so I'm not sure where that came from. But I feel that, you know, we work for you. And everybody knows, if you don't, you should know, my office is open and you can come and talk to me. And I'll answer any question I can. And if I don't have the answer, I'm gonna find it for you. And that's what we do. That's our job. I know you have some reservations about Kelly because she hasn't been here very long. But I'm here to tell you that we're gonna make sure she does her job. If she doesn't and you don't think she's not doing her job, 2022 is right around the corner. I'm, I'm sorry, that's, this job is only temporary until the election that's coming up in 2022. And that's where everybody gets to, I mean, that's where you truly get to have your opinions known. So, but know that I'm gonna make sure Kelly can do her job. And like I said, it's the same situation. No, I'm not the treasurer, but I'm gonna help her find any resource she needs to get her job done. So, that's all I gotta say. I'm done. I'm done preaching.
Yeah, if anyone wants to discuss things, I like having long philosophical historical discussions. Anytime on this side. Yeah, you can enjoy it. Here, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.